You doing okay?
So far, so good.
Good.
Nothing a little extra sleep wouldn't cure.
Still riding that motorbike?
Soon as the weather clears. I'll tell you what, if you think people around here are frustrated about the spring, I was up in Rochester yesterday and those folks are fit to be tied. It's getting tiresome. Yeah. It was starting to look like a kind of a mild winter, too. But almost every- it was starting to look like sort of a mild winter as far as, you know, road protection and stuff. You ought to put more in the collection plate.
Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. Roll call?
I'd take a roll call, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to remind everybody that the meeting is being taped accordingly. Public comments on the agenda for tonight. Are you ready? There are not without taking a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, please.
Second.
Roll call vote, Fred Buckles.
Yes.
Carol Best.
Yes.
Fred Lawson.
Yes. We have the approval of the minutes for March fourteenth. Are there any questions? Are there any for the minutes? We made the change in-
We have a correction actually.
January, it should've been February.
It should be the twenty-eighth, not the twenty-fourth.
It much should've been February.
Right.
There are no additions or corrections, we're entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the, uh, for the March fourteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Roll call vote, Fred Buckles.
Yes.
Carol Best.
Yes.
Fred Lawson.
Yes. Next we have the approval of the expenditures. Are there any questions on expenditures? What's the total for that your roller? Is it ten thousand one hundred and ten thousand one twenty-five?
Ten thousand one twenty-five. We had to pay twenty-five dollars for the electronic transfer. Roller was actually ten thousand one hundred. Then you had electronic transfer. You know, we had to wire out the money to them, so that's what that was.
This Olson and Associates.
That's Andy Saltin from the planning commission.
Do you know what that hydraulic lift's on it for?
That was for the snow plow on John's truck. It started leaking and then he couldn't raise the plow, so it started digging in, so Paul went out, jacked it up, and they changed it up real high and brought it in and we had to go get it through the building.
Is it John? Any other questions? Not, we're entertain a motion to approve expenditures.
Make a motion to approve the expenditures.
Second.
Roll call vote, Fred Buckles.
Yes.
Carol Best.
Yes.
Ted Lawson.
Yes. Person's on the agenda for tonight? I'm sorry. Nobody?
Nobody called to get in on Monday.
Okay, there was, okay. Dwyane?
Gentlemen, thanks for having me. Folks, for those of you who don't know me, and some of you here do, I'm Attorney Sean White from Franklin, running for District Attorney of Van Angel County. I'm on a Republican ticket with two other opponents. The thing that separates me the most from those other opponents is nobody has more experience than I do, nobody's been in more courtrooms than I've been in, nobody's handled as many jury cases I've handled. Ms. Vionne called me about a year ago, said she was going to retire, and I was the next candidate for this office because it needs leadership, it needs the type of response that I can give. I've been on both sides of the ball. I started as an Assistant DA in nineteen eighty-six in this office in Van Angel County. Marie was the other assistant with me, Bill Martin was our DA. So I've been on that side, and I prosecuted many cases for two years before I went with Ralph Ellis Montana in Clarion for three and a half years. Since nineteen ninety-one, I've been in Franklin, practicing on my own, primarily in criminal law. That's all I've really ever done for the last twenty-six years. I'm now entering my twenty-seventh year. This office requires a great deal of detail, leadership, knowledge, but mostly what you have to be is smart about the cases coming through. And so what I've planned to do, if I'm elected, is manage the office, streamline the cases, take control of the assistants that would be under me, so we can miss some of the problems that have been existing in Van Angel County for the last six to eight years with a particular Assistant DA that simply wasn't following the rules. That was another primary reason why I ran. So what I'd like to do is convince everybody that on May twenty-first, this is a very important race to run for. The voters need to know who the most qualified candidate is, and if you look at my resume for applying for this job, without a doubt, my resume speaks for itself. It's better than any of the other candidates that are running, and I look forward to, there's going to be an open forum for anybody who needs to know. On April the fourth, there will be a forum with all the Republican candidates at the Van Angel campus. I believe it starts at five-thirty, six o'clock, somewhere in that range. I invite everybody who wants to know anymore to attend that meeting. Gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, I'm moving the staff report.
Okay, first I have is, uh, we've received that ham rubber tire roller. It came in last Friday, and, uh, it's, we've had it running, it starts right up, it's in great shape. Uh, so Ted and the boys out there are real happy, they've all been running it. So, uh, they're real happy that we got it, so.
No surprises?
No surprises. Okay, next I have is, uh, you had a conditional use hearing for Shockey back on May- March twenty-first here at the township. And you had informed Mr. Shockey that you'd be making a decision tonight. You do have a, uh, report and recommendation from your hearing officer, Sarah Seidel, which is your solicitor. So I would need a motion to, you know, how are we going to do it?
I think we directed Sarah to write this motion, so we essentially approved it. Make a motion again that we do proceed with the report and recommendations of your officer.
What's the, uh, condition?
Two recommendations. Yeah, the screening. Oh, you don't have this one? What it was is this screening next to the houses and stuff like that, and then have the exhaust stand either on the north or the west side of the building.
With the green trees six feet.
Right, they have to be at least six feet in that building.
Where they can be.
If not, they have to put up the fence.
Prefer near the green if we can.
Right.
If we can. Okay. Make a motion, second.
No, second.
My second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Carol Best.
Yes.
Fred Lawson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next I have is, uh, being that the code of the township of Cranberry is almost complete, except for the zoning section, uh, what do you want to do? Do you want us to advertise this and get everything going? We can adopt a book, and then when the planning commission gets the zoning complete, we can, you know, adopt the zoning section at that time. This has to be done by an ordinance.
Does the sign portion of that come?
You were rewriting the signed portion completely, and so what's in the book would be no.
That's up to the sign, I don't think it's not completed as a zoning.
As the zoning and the signed ordinance.
Right. Whatever we're going to sign now, yes. I think we ought to, for what we have so far.
Sarah recommended that you do it.
You did?
Sarah, the solicitor, Sarah Seidel. So I'll need a motion.
We'll need a motion on that.
And then I'll write, and it'll end up being ordinance number-
Okay, whatever, the ordinance two forty-three?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve ordinance two forty-three? It'll be as far as it's been approved by the planning commission?
Correct. And that's all we're going to advertise is what is approved.
Right.
Which would be everything but the signed ordinance and the zoning.
I made a motion.
Roll call vote, Fred Buckles.
Yes.
Carol Best.
Yes.
Fred Lawson.
Yes.
Next I have is we received our bridge inspection reports. They're done by the county consultant, Frank B. Taylor Engineering. Uh, this is part of the two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen federal bridge inspection program. Our three bridges that need inspected are the Airsail Bridge, which is number four oh eight, the Van Bridge, which is number four ten, and the Halls Run Bridge, which is number four twelve. And then we paid twenty percent of the cost to have those bridges inspected, and this year's cost is one thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
That's our cost, the total?
That is our cost. The total is five thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Well, if the inspection determines that we need repairs?
We need repairs and everything like that, and here's the, I have the engineering reports. Looking them over, there's a lot of spot painting needs done. There's some, what they call scouring on the Van Bridge. That's where the water coming down is worse, some of the big rocks away from the wing wall next to the, uh, parapet wall. And what they'll do is they'll, we'll have to go back in and lay those rocks back in there. And everything can be done by the municipality. There's a, a section on the Airsail Bridge that the guide rail needs straightened up, and we'll just go down and take our, we have sex, old guide rail, we'll take it down and put on down there. And those are what needs done on the bridges.
So if there's costs involved in that, we pay it off?
The inspector, they're doing it? No, will be done by us. The only thing we are paying is the bridge and our twenty percent portion of the bridge inspection fee, which is the eleven hundred sixty-five ninety-eight.
They check it out, we have to make the-
They'll pick us out, they give us these books, we go through and pick out what needs to be done. A lot of them on the bridges, you know, there are only like seven, oh, there's nothing I don't know, Lenny was still here, and we built the bridges, all but the Halls Run Bridge, that bend off, and they just completely went over that before we would take it over. And there's only four cars a day go over that bridge, you know, in this area down there, because it's more or less a, just a bridge to get to their house.
Yeah, there's nothing else to do, yeah. I know you're out.
Yep. Okay, uh, next I have is, we were approached by the Rails and Trails Society. Uh, they did get another DCNR grant, and they're going to pave from the brine treatment plant down to Sandy Creek and then a little bit further, and they would like us to sweep the trail prior to them paving. This won't be done until, right now, IA got the bid, they're going to put another inch and a half, just like they did from the, you know, up above here. Yeah, so, uh, hoping to have it start around May first. IA wants to do that. Yeah, what it'll be is we just hook a broom up to our truck, they'll go down, drive it down, then drive back up and- Let you know that we talked to them, I talked with Jim Holden today, and that's what was going to happen. Next is, uh, just to remind everybody that the two fifty-seven sixty-two project is to start on Monday, April first. That's when Horizon Engineering Construction said they were going to start the project, so.
But they're not going to, it's still going to be up in traffic both ways?
Right, it'll be, you know, that's not looking until August first on that. Uh, we received a couple of our audits from a poking company, and I sent a notice to the Dairy to be advertised, and it was published in the Dairy on March twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen. And I have a copy of it there, and it appears with the date in the paper on that date. Uh, next, I attended the Van Angel County Tax Collection Committee meeting, uh, down in Franklin. Everyone says that they're getting their money in, and it's about the same as what it was before. And they are select, and they are checking into, uh, about collecting some of the dilapid taxes that, you know, some of the ones that they had sent tax before. They're looking to go try and get some of those for us. And Ted and I listened to a PSAT CDL Program Guidance webinar. The township CDL drivers are exempt from the medical physical exams, and another thing that we learned about during this webinar was that, uh, the difference between interstate, I-N-T-E-R, and intrastate, I-N-T-R-A state, CDL drivers. Uh, there's a thing on there, when they're renewing their application, they can check either interstate or intrastate. And a couple of our guys, we found out, did check intrastate, which, you know, they're just, they aren't going into, they don't, they don't want to be able to go into any of the other differences. But we also learned that if you're a truck driver and you have your CDL in Pennsylvania, you could have your wife sitting with you, you get to the Maryland line, you can jump in the cab, go back to sleep, and turn it over to her. You're responsible for that truck, even though she's the one driving it. Don't need a CDL. Yeah, it, uh, we were, uh, some of the stuff, and I did print out a copy of the guidance, and I mean, I was just, I just didn't- Yeah, it, uh, says right in there, I mean, it came right out. So Pennsylvania, we did find out, is one of the, has one of the tougher CDL licenses, you know, for the drivers and stuff.
Who sponsored it?
Who sponsored it? Uh, PSATs, they went over the thing. Yeah, we, Ted and I were back there about, it was about lunch once, uh, noon to, I don't know, five after one, ten after one. It wasn't, you know, it was a good one, though, it was very informative. And that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Frank. Public comments.
Fred Gusterson.
Yes.
I remembered the name, my name is-
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, Fred.
Nice to see you, Fred. That's all I was thinking about. I got some questions. First, uh, back probably six years ago, we got bids on a property between the hospital and the township owners and cemetery, okay, that you give to the ORA.
Yeah.
Are we, Fred?
We, we didn't, we didn't give it to them.
We, no, well, we, we got bids on that. That three S on the side come up to a million and two hundred thousand, maybe? It was, it was over a million. At the same time, we did the piece of property that we're mowing at the end of Steffi Boulevard, where the water tank used to be, and if I recall, that was about seventy-five hundred or eighty-five hundred, that was appraised at. And at the time, we had an offer, I think, of fifty-five hundred for that piece of property. Frank said we could not sell it, it had to be approved by the judge. So what my question is, how can you give away one point two million dollars in that neighborhood of township land to the ORA without judge's approval when there's probably seventy thousand dollars worth of timber on the back of it and trees? That's my, that's one question I have. How, how did, did you get judge's approval? Or how, how can you do that when before, when I was here, you couldn't do it? You couldn't even do it for twenty-five hundred.
I didn't call judge approval, what was?
Frank told me it had to be approved by a judge before we could accept anything lower than the bid amount on the-
What it is, when you do the bidding, you have to bid it out, you can bid it out twice, and we own, we never even bid, we put it advertised at one time.
One time.
And we never got any bids.
Right.
So we did not advertise it again.
Right.
Which we would've had to do. And then if you were denied again, then you would get whatever the offer was, and you would go down and see if you could get approval.
So how can you, how can you accept forty, what was it, forty thousand? How can you accept forty thousand on a million, two hundred thousand in that neighborhood property, and you only did it once? Would it have been right to advertise it again, then go to the judge? I mean, we're missing the judge here somewhere. And when I, and I know that distinctly because you and I had a big debate over what, what it is, is they accepted the bid of this. Who?
The supervisor.
We said, which bid?
We did.
They didn't bid it out, or nothing in the paper, and just outright sold the property to them, Frank, without going through the courts.
I did, they did.
Your suggestion to them, you, you're the one that runs the show. You're the one that runs the show, Frank. You tell them what decision- Fred looks over at you and asks for decisions, and what's going where? Oh, yeah, hey, Frank, well, then, then four of it.
I think it's a question that needs to be directed to our solicitor.
You know, I'd like to know on record how you can give a piece of property away for less than the value of the timber on it.
We had an opinion from our solicitor when we did it, so.
We could've, yeah, we checked with our solicitor on that. We could've gave that property to him. We could've gave that property to him.
It's a nonprofit.
Yeah, no, it's a nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit. Otherwise, it's not going on the tax rolls.
But, oh, I wouldn't say that right now, but there, there is, in the future, it's going to be on there. Frank, I thought we tried to advertise that property before, even over in Ohio, to sell it, we couldn't do it.
Yeah, but Frank said you started to do it twice before you sell it.
What I mean, when we had the bids up before, before, we had no, no response, nothing.
But Fred just said you had to do it twice, you didn't, Fred, you did it once.
No, we didn't sell it.
It's just, uh-
As far as me looking over at Frank, I would let Frank comment on it because he handles it, if he's going to make a statement. If not, then I will make a statement on it.
Well, okay, you give me a statement, why?
Well, I said, you know, we checked with our solicitor, and we could still, we could do that.
You have a solicitor, who, do you have a letter where he said, okay, that?
I don't know if we have a letter or not.
Well, then you should've done it verbally, you shouldn't have a letter in the file.
Well, maybe there is one, was it, Fred? We're going to have to check, and we'll check with our solicitor on it.
I just wondered, when I read that in the paper-
You know yourself, we tried to sell that property.
I, Fred, that is not the point. The point is, it was, it was appraised, we paid thousands of dollars to get that appraised. It was appraised at over a million, I'll say, but there was more than that. And that, when we had the meeting right here, uh, uh, they, no bid come in on it. The one gentleman here come in and, and wanted to make an offer afterwards, he was told distinctly that he couldn't because it didn't match the bid.
Yeah. I don't recall anything by the judge, though.
I do, Fred.
I'm sure that would've had to been the way, if it had been advertised again, then we didn't get any bids, and probably we would've had to go to the judge to get approval.
So why, why didn't the judge get into it now? It's only one you'd have to. You sure of that?
Yes.
They gave it away?
That was our solicitor's opinion.
They did not?
We could've given it to them.
Advertise the property for bid. Right, so how can you sell public property without advertising it?
You'll have to talk to Mr. Greenfield.
I'll do that, but what you said is, is on record that you give it away?
We could've.
Yeah, we're not a nonprofit, because that's what, I saw that.
Fred, the idea wasn't, you know, we could've probably maybe marketed that money and, or that property and got more money for it, but what we were trying to do, and what we've been trying to do for years, is to get somebody interested in doing an elderly housing project on that, and that's why it was done that way.
And you know that yourself.
And it wasn't, you know, it's for the long-term advantage of the township, and, you know, hopefully flies because, you know, we've kind of stuck their neck out, they've stuck their neck out, and they, you know, they're, the project is being pushed and moved ahead at this time.
And it'll be a, it'll, it'll be taxpayer based, I mean-
I'm sure it will be at this time, yes.
Frank, when you were on the, on the supervisor, you know we talked about that, we tried to sell it. We didn't have anything.
I know we tried to sell it, that's why I was curious when it went for forty-some thousand or whatever. And, uh, and was, and, and the story I got when I was here, you couldn't sell that stuff. So over there at the end of Steffi, why don't you call those people and say, hey, we had a bid eighty-some hundred dollars, we'll sell that to you for the five thousand you offered. And get rid of that, if that's the way you're handling it.
I'm not sure on the Steffi part, which way, is that where there are one of our sewer lines or-
No, probably there's a line running near it with a big water tank on it.
It was next to, uh-
The guy that just died.
And, uh, the game warden.
To sell it for a, a profit organization or somebody for profit, it would have to be advertised, and-
Well, isn't that land out there for profit?
It's for, it was sold to a nonprofit agency. That's the difference.
So the UMPC, UMPC, but they're getting student Pittsburgh right now for nonprofit.
You want to sell the UMPC?
No, but I'm saying they're, they're supposed to be nonprofit.
And the whole idea was to try and get this elderly housing project moving, and, you know, they've stepped in to do that, and it's being worked on.
Well, before you were here, Fred and Fred, when I was here, uh, we sold them all. And Fred pushed to have us give a right of way back by moving on to that, and they brought and sent us in a, a computer-generated, you know, housing place. Well, that never, they've got the right of way now back through, and that never developed in us in five years, ten years.
That's growth in California.
Well, we have stipulations on this, if it, if not does not develop, then it will revert back to the township. There's a certain period of time that they have to develop the land, some of the acres have to be developed, if not, then it will come back, revert back to the township.
I don't remember that.
Well, I saw that in the legal.
You had my last two things yet. There's one I haven't been in in a while. The property next door, why was that purchased? The house and the land. Right next to the township here.
Why we did it?
You say why or when?
Why.
Oh, I thought you said why.
The chances, if it's for expansion, the chances this township- The chances, if it's for expansion, the chances this township growing over three total miles anywhere for housing, you know, it doesn't have a road now, I don't see where we need more equipment up there, or why we need adjoining land.
Well, we, we bought that so Mike could have some place to store some more of his pipe and stuff like that, back up in here. Cause that, Mike can slip line a lot of the sewer line, and they bring a lot of piping, and there's no room to put it down here. So that's why we bought the property next door. So we could have some more storage room. If you look back there, you can see everything is getting pretty full with the buildings that we're building, the garages and everything. So that's why we bought the property.
What he's doing down stage, run, I got two houses in there, he's running this line in front of, that pipe's down there, laying in the American Legion part of it. And I don't know if that's enough to go the whole way up or not. But that was another thing, and one other thing while I'm here. Uh, hey, Omen, you guys sorta give her a shafting, didn't you? Uh, I understand she was, what, is, uh, three days? And cut her to two and took her, uh, hospitalization?
She's on, she's on part-time, Fred.
Yeah.
Reduced her position to part-time. She, there wasn't enough work for her to, to do, to maintain full-time.
Is, is there any other part-time to get her hospitalization?
We don't have any other part-time fully.
I just thought that was after the year she put in here, that was a little much. Yeah.
No, that's the only reason why. Yeah, I, and she's happy with it. Has she complained to you at all?
I heard roundabout way, but she liked the third, three days instead of the two. But if she's getting the work done in two, I, you know. No, I didn't, no, I didn't hear from her, I heard from somebody else, so. But I just, I didn't know what it was until a couple of weeks ago. And somebody approached me on it and asked why, why that would happen.
Thank you, she's a great worker, and we appreciate what she does, but she's indicated to us that she could do her work in two days a week.
She indicated in two days?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, I'm tired now, nothing to run, so maybe I'll spend more time with you guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah.
Your name, please?
My name is Craig Adams. Uh, having just retired from the timber industry, if, if the parcel that, that was sold to O R A has seventy thousand dollars worth of timber on it, and if they're gonna develop it, I'd strip it. I mean, I would take it and clear-cut that bucket. Why can't you?
Well, yeah, we could, but have you ever done a development, Craig?
Well.
You can't clear-cut because you select cut, because you wanna leave cert, trees in certain places to benefit your development.
Well, that's fine, but if the timber bid went out, and there was seventy thousand dollars with marketable timber on it, why give O R A the seventy thousand dollars? Why, why wouldn't that be beneficial to coming to the township? Because they want the dirt. If there's a few trees left on it, so be it. But seventy thousand dollars worth of timber, the first thing they would do is say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take the timber off of it.
Like I say, if you've ever done a development, you know you've gotta select cut trees that you wanna cut and keep the ones that you wanna keep. You know, we go, we go in and cut down all the timber that's in there, marketable timber. And, you know, they don't have half of the property they've developed that they have if they have all the timber to start with.
Well, yeah, but they gotta remove the trees to do the develop.
They're gonna remove some, sure.
Oh.
The whole front of that, Fred Gusterson, the whole front of that was stripped of timber already.
Yes, yes.
Trash brushing there now.
And probably a lot of it is the trees back there along that swamp, or it's wet.
Well, that would, if you take the stumpings out of it, right?
Yeah. But with the, with the plans that they were looking at, that some of those trees would be nice, because they'd like to have a small park or something back in there too.
And that would be fine, but I. You know, I think that, I think that if, if, you know, we have, we have timbered in, on golf courses. We've timbered in the housing developments down in, in Cranberry Township and Butler County. And you can go in there and selectively cut and make a good dollar and not, not hurt the, the, the surrounding stumpings that is there. And you still have your shade and everything else that they probably would be looking for with some trees in there. And you get some marketable timber off of it.
Yeah, had, had they had a complete and certain plan, development plan in hand.
So you would know, is that what you're saying? You know where they're putting the buildings and whatnot?
Right, but they don't have it. And it's gonna be phased over here, so it wouldn't be, yeah, you just couldn't do it feasibly do it. I, I mean, I understand it'd be nice, but you just couldn't feasibly do it and leave them with something that they can do.
They have about five years that they're gonna keep, develop more and more and more, so.
Well, and, and, you know, there's, you know, there's no denying the township is becoming senior citizens.
Well, we do need it if we really do it, and.
Yeah. Okay.
Unfortunately.
Any other comment?
Every, have a happy Easter.
Please adjourn.
You ready for my question?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, so this is what Shockey's thinking about.
Yes, I see you, Greg.
Thank you.
I'll come up there.
Somebody recommend it, within three years, five acres, has to get developed. And as soon as, during the meeting, Mr. Supervisor said.
They've gotta get the few of those. For right now, they don't know whether they don't have an entrance off.
No, he's taking over. Off the industry.
They've got plans.
They wouldn't go on with what?
Mr. White, my name is Mark, hi. I spoke with you briefly on the phone, I guess it was earlier, last week, this week.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And we had published an article in Vidango Weekend, or we wanted to know, or I wanted to know if there was anything that you still cared to comment on.
I still hadn't even read it yet.
Okay, very good.
You can understand, I'm pretty busy with serious things.
Certainly.
So if I read it and get around to it, I'll maybe call you back.
Okay, very good, sir, thank you. So how you doing, Fred?
What would you take in, is that video thing?
Yeah.
Oh, that's pretty slick.
Yeah, it's, it's small, it fits in my pocket. Things were so much more simple when they were radio, you know.